All this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, April 14th at 7:00 PM. Just for the record, for those of you at home, we are meeting in the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room at 323 Bedford Street in Lakeville. This is an in-person meeting and the public is welcome. At this time, I'd like to introduce our newest board member, which is Nora Klein. This Klein, welcome.
Thank you.
And at this time, we're going to reorganize the planning board, which we would do after every election.
I motion Mark Chairman.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. I'd like to make a motion for Peter Conroy to be the Vice Chair.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, we went through the motions, but the board positions will stay the same for one more year. The first item on our agenda is, this is a continuance of Two Bedford Street. It's Thomas J. Parento of PBT, real estate applicant, which we have a request to continue from the applicant. Was that, we saw an email there from somebody named Jillian.
That's correct. That's their attorney.
So, at the applicant's request, I'd make a motion to continue the Two Bedford Street Site Plan Review until our April 28th meeting at 7:00 PM.
A second.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So, Two Bedford Street is continued. The next item on our agenda is the fee review project, to review the final revisions. We did have that in our packet. And I think, Mark, if you want to just quickly walk us through, I think that most of the revisions were in the...
So, the revisions that I made were primarily to... There was something about the... There was a couple items here. For the, one of these special districts. Oh, yeah.
Think you made them all similar.
Yes, all similar, except for the 43D, because that allows the mixed use, the bottom. And then, so also I changed the wording for what you would consider a minor, although the bylaw doesn't make a distinction, but for just a change of use under Site Plan Review in the middle of that same second page. I put for a change of use or other minor site plan changes. So, if someone's coming in for something we would consider minor, I mean, there's not a real distinction, but we would be able to reduce the fee down to $500. And a change of use usually is, there's not construction, there's not engineering review. It's, you know, reuse of the building.
Right.
What else did I change? The bond of security amount at the top of the page is based on the actual cost of construction instead of some number had so much per...
So, that would be negotiated with the approval?
Yeah.
To determine?
We put together a cost estimate. And then, in the past, I think here you had Highway Super, put that together.
Well, I think we actually just had that blanket amount.
You had a blanket amount.
Per foot per road, and that was probably quite antiquated.
Yeah, yes.
So, that's why we wanted to go through this.
Dramatically.
Yeah. Yep.
And I think those are about the only changes that we had from our last, that you basically voted on at the last meeting. So, I wanted you to see this before I post a hearing notice and change it into text for an actual, that will be inserted into the bylaw to replace the existing.
To change our fee review thing, this doesn't need to go to town meeting though? It just has to have a post a public hearing?
That's correct.
Right. So, for tonight's action, make a motion to approve this as drafted, to continue with that process?
Yes.
So, do you, anybody else have any comments on what we've got here? I mean, I know...
Yeah, it looks good. It looks like you've made all the changes that we had discussed last meeting.
And I'm sure, I think Peter would be fine. He would have sent comments otherwise. So, I make a motion to approve the fee review schedule as drafted and have Mark, the planner, proceed with what he needs to do in order to have us post a public hearing.
One second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So, the next item on the agenda is 13 Main Street. Discuss a possible site plan. Is this you, Jamie?
This is me.
Alright, and as you're doing, Sean from Lakeham asked to have you speak at the podium. Anybody from the public that wants to speak tonight, they would ask that you also come up to the podium if necessary.
Why the stand?
It was lovely.
Good evening. Jamie Bissonnet from Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. Beau McMahon, the applicant or property owner. This is on Main Street. This would be in between the CVS and the self-storage building that's being constructed presently. The main reason that we're here tonight is we're looking for direction, feeling from the board. Beau owns the property. He's looking to find the best use to put on the property. I know that there's been a couple of items kicked around. I believe Beau and Attorney O'Shaughnessy have sat down with Mark, the planner. And essentially, what we want to do is we want to kind of get a feel from the board as to which direction the board would like us to go in. This plan that we're showing right here shows 19 residential units. They would be age...
Senior housing.
Senior housing, that's correct word. With some type of a larger building out front to help keep with the frontage on Main Street, the aesthetic business look. Not really sure. Because of the vagueness in the regulations, we have probably as many questions as answers on things.
Do you talk about accessory building type of regulations?
Whether we can have a business with the senior housing behind it, or whether it has to all be residential in this overlay district, what setbacks apply, what lot coverages apply. Yeah, we have quite a few questions. And so, what we wanted to do tonight was kind of get a feel from the board, try to start getting some answers so that Beau's not kind of chasing his tail and that we're going down the right path. And since this is the board that handles the planning, I think this is the best place to start. So, again, what we have here is something that Beau would consider doing. You know, it's definitely in the master plan that the town put out. They reference this area as being a place that we need, you know, senior housing and dense housing at that. It is a little...
And so, just to be clear, I know that you've talked to Mark Resnick and to myself. This is a buy right use in that zone?
In the overlay district, it is a buy right use. That's correct. So, this would not be 40B or anything along those lines as put. This is buy right.
That's buy right. Means that by right, they can do it without a denial. It doesn't require any special permits.
It's similar to building a residential house on a residential lot. If the lot meets the regulations, you pretty much just have to meet the setbacks and health code, and you're good. So, in this case though, we don't, we're not looking to fight with the board. We want to kind of, in harmony with the board, and move forward to something that works. So, we'd like to get the board, you know, his input and see what we can do. So, I know this is really the first time most of you are seeing it. There's been some indications that maybe we go denser, get rid of the large number of individual buildings, maybe go small, smaller number of buildings, but larger density in the buildings. You know, whether they be condo style or even apartment-style buildings. That's what we're here tonight is to try to find out.
And that's remaining within the age-restricted housing? Is there a challenge for you, Beau? As far as, I would imagine with the age restricted, you want to end up on one floor?
Right, for the record, Beau McMahon, the property owner. So, that would lead to some potential challenges. This concept was designed with the Lakeville 2030 Master Plan in mind that calls out high-density village-style cluster senior housing. So, that's what we were trying to adopt. Main Street has a bunch of different looks going down the Main Street. We did add a commercial-type building in the front that provides screening that could be potentially designed to the board's liking. There's just so many different looks on Main Street. It's tough to pick one style that would be kind of harmonious with the rest of the street. But if it, you know, it's the board and the planners' preference that they'd like to see less building and a higher density in it, I could definitely explore that route. It might be more of a lease-up challenge to have age-restricted housing on a second or third floor.
I think that means elevators at some point, which is probably costly.
Correct. But if that's the direction that the town's looking, I can definitely explore that as well.
So, from an aesthetic standpoint, one of the things that Beau and I have talked about is, when you're driving off of the highway down Main Street, there's quite an elevation change. This is the retaining wall on the side of CVS. And so, it catches my eye every time I'm driving up. I see just a massive retaining wall. And so, I feel that when I'm leaving and driving up this way, I'm going to be pulled to the top of the hill. And so, as you can see, this area over here, what we'd be able to do is that's kind of the peak, the crest of the hill, and be able to plant along the top of that, offering a nice break. Because whether you put residential or commercial here, it's going to seem like a skyscraper, you know, as you're driving up to it. It's just going to seem massive and high. So, we would obviously focus in on a landscaping plan that really emphasizes over in here and towards the front to help screen things. Also try to focus in towards the back a little bit from 79.
And Jamie, I have a question. Is that, so there's not an exit onto Route 79?
There's not. Our property goes to a point. So, we actually don't have, except maybe a few inches of frontage, correct?
I believe it's 17 feet.
It's, yeah, it's a small, it's a small section, so.
On 79?
On 79, on the right of way.
Yep. There on the back there. And again, I'm not looking to run you through the wringer. I'm looking at, like, you had asked about the front building and the appearance. So, just to the right, CVS, wood structure clapboard-ish, whatever that is. It might be a hardy plank or something with asphalt shingle roof. Funeral home on the other side of your building there. Similar type of, you know, clapboard with asphalt shingle roof. But I would like to see something like that. I don't think it would be out of place if you came back with a plan with maybe two or three bigger buildings that maybe emulated the look of those buildings, but then you could put multiple units in them too. If that's an option, if that works for you from a financial standpoint, to try and get the same number of units in two or three buildings instead of 19.
You know, in line with what Mark said, you know, in previous meetings with the members here have talked about retaining the rural character of Lakeville. So, I mean, I was, my recommendation is to try and build, whatever you build is to make it within the rural character of Lakeville. You know, with the, in that area. Whatever that would be. Jamie, you've heard this, talked about this before, so you would know better.
Understood. This, like I said, this concept of the tiny, I call them tiny. They're about 1,000 square feet, two bed and one bath senior housing. That idea came straight from the housing plan that the town put out. So, that's why I tried to incorporate it, because they're going to be looking for that in the next 10 years. I have no problem going to a fewer amount of building with high density. Economically, if I'm putting them all in two buildings, that ends up instead of 19 units, the equivalent of that, once you factor in elevators, turns into between 40 and 50 units.
Now, does that bring us closer? Within the MBTA, because we're within half a mile, does that density comply with that 15 units per acre?
My understanding is we would need at least 45 units on this site to comply.
To be able to comply. Now, can you do a site plan with a couple buildings and still have a small commercial footprint out front?
Sure, based on zoning. That's kind of why, you know, from our standpoint, we'd like to maybe employ you and Nate to get together and give us some definitive answers on that.
The overlay district description on senior housing omits any other information. If it was like an R&amp;D-type facility, it has a paragraph below it stating if you can have accessory structures. The overlay district, the way that it's written and approved, just says you can do it. It doesn't really dig into any other areas.
Exactly. And we don't want to, I mean, we've made assumptions for a concept. It'd be cost-foolish to try to do that on a definitive design and a waste of the board's time.
Right. So, again, you asked a question. I said two or three buildings that are similar to the CVS, not CVS or the funeral home in appearance, that I think that I could find that appealing from a visual standpoint. Or if you were going to stick with the smaller homes, I guess I'd just like to see a little bit of wiggle to that, not as linear in the layout to make it a little bit more... I think that would be appealing if you stuck that road. I mean, I picture this being similar to the homes on, is it Ebony Farm Circle or something? Smaller homes. These are probably a little smaller than that, but still, the same concept.
Well, you could almost do a townhouse concept too, similar to what Blueberry Estates is.
Yeah, so, yeah, they have townhouses. And again, that's one of the things, when we kick around the idea of townhouses though, when you go three units or more, you trigger sprinklers. Sprinklers change the cost, just like the big-story buildings. That's why with elevators and sprinklers, the density that he needs to get changes because of the expense parameters to make the financial numbers work. Not something that we can't look at. We definitely, that's why we're here, is to find out. And then Beau has to do the hard numbers and make sure he can make it all work.
I guess my question to Mark and also you, Jamie, is if you guys are familiar with a family's unit that's over at the Laberan Country Club?
Yeah.
Is that kind of a building what would go, would work here? Or is that too big?
I think this is smaller. This is more, this is closer to like a 30 by 30 box. It's like 28, or 34?
I believe it's 28 by 34, as shown on the plan.
So, they're smaller, one story. They're made for people, whether it's snowbirds or people that just, they're looking for a place to live and don't need a ton of room. They, you know, they...
They want their bedroom on the first floor. They don't want any stairs. Generally, they'll just be able to, if they had to roll, they could just roll right out.
Yep. And the proximity to, whether it's the CVS or to the train or just downtown, they can do it on foot if they want. So, it offers up some nice amenities. It's a nice location for it. Again, we talk about the businesses on the side. I mean, it will work to some advantage having the pharmacy next door. It's very convenient. And you've got a nice sidewalk system, which a lot of our town doesn't have. So, there are some pros to this. Exactly.
Exactly.
So, now, my question is, when you're looking to discuss with Nate and Mark, is it a business building? Like, do you want to use it for a different purpose other than residential housing? Or what is that purpose?
So, what happens is with the finances on this, we need to find out what we can do so we can actually come up with a business model that makes sense. So, for example, if we know the 19 units plus a rental business out front financially can make sense and work as a model, then maybe that's something we go with. If it's 19 and maybe a community center that's just dead space that he has to build and heat and maintain, that may not. It might, but it may. And that's what we have to find out is what can we do so we can make the numbers work?
Or even like Mark had suggested, if you're going with that higher number to do these bigger buildings and just have one of those bigger buildings out front rather than a business use maybe?
Oh, yeah. And you can make it look more like a CVS, but still be residential. It won't be a smaller house. So, that's definitely possible with these larger buildings as well.
I think it is the best place it could go.
When I say CVS though, I'm more talking...
No, no, we get it.
The finish on the outside.
Yep. Yeah, the changes in roof lines.
Aesthetically like the funeral home. But, you know, similar materials on either one. I don't care if it's white or if it's gray.
No, no, we get it.
Nora, did you have any input on this and your thoughts?
No, I overall like the idea. It's just hard to say this is the direction you should go without a little bit more detail. But I conceptually like the idea.
Okay.
Michelle?
If we do need senior housing, age-restricted, I think this is the best place it could go, honestly.
And Jack here?
Oh, well, sure.
Is there a density issue as far as us coming back with more or less units? Is the board looking for a direction on that? I mean, is, because obviously with the larger buildings, we're going to have more density. That doesn't, that doesn't turn the board off on that direction, does it? If we come back with 44, 45?
I think if it helps the town with, I mean, does this also benefit us with our, the housing inventory for...
Yes, I believe it does, yes.
Because it's age-restricted, even though it may not be affordable?
It should be able to help us with the MBTA community requirements. I'll have to look at those. Remember, those regulations are still draft regulations. They haven't been finalized. So, but again, having that kind of density within half a mile of the district and having something that allows for it, you know, is...
It helps with compliance with that.
It helps with compliance. It also helps with the community, as it's been pointed out. The master plan, you know, identifies age-restricted housing as a need in the community. So, whether you build 20 or 19, almost 20 units, or 45, I mean, it's twice as many, but still, it's not... There's a need for it. I don't think they'll be sitting empty for very long even. So, I think, and I, you talked about whether you could do an office building out front as well. So, it does allow for multiple principal structures being located on a single lot. And I think if it was designed as a mixed-use building, I think that's the intent, to allow, you know, an office building as a principal structure, housing's allowed as a principal structure. So, you can have, I believe, I mean, we'll sit down with Nate for a final interpretation, but I think that that would be allowed as well, so.
The only thing I wanted to say is if with a higher density and more people, I mean, that's, the traffic is something to consider. And maybe just if there would be a second egress, whether it's through the, like, if you could connect through...
Through the self-storage.
Can you get to 79, Jamie?
If you can't...
You can't get through to 79?
I think to appropriately do it, we would have to work something out with the town of Lakeville. The town of Lakeville owns the parcel next to us. And so, we would have to, we would have to see if the town could, yeah.
That might be...
It's not a requirement though.
It's not a requirement, but if it's the board's opinion, then we can, we can talk to, you know, we can talk to Mark or Harry and see if that's...
I guess I would defer to the fire chief.
Yeah.
And maybe if there was a secondary, I hate to say "fire lane", but people could use it if it came from the bend in the lot into the back of the self-storage. So that, you know, it wasn't just too up toward the front. If at least you couldn't get all the way, you could get partway and then come across if needed. I think that would probably be a beneficial thing. I would be open to either, you know, if you're going to go with the small house look and plan, just, I hate to use the term, but make it a little sexier looking within the layout of it. And I think we'd probably want to see a little bit more landscaping buffer on the final plan for that one. Or then, you know, secondly, the other option, if you can financially make it work, would be the couple of big buildings. That, you know, as long as they're all age-restricted. And I guess my only question then is, in the big building scenario, would you condo those so that they could be sold? Or would it be rental at that point? It's kind of a different animal.
I'd have to dig into it a little bit more. My intention would be to hold them as rentals.
Yep.
It seems like that's the primary need in the town. But if it works condoizing them and selling them as condos, then I'm open to that as well.
Jamie, how much land is it between this gentleman's property and 79?
You're saying the distance?
Yeah, well, if you, that way down the corner, if you want to get out to 79, right?
Yep.
How much land is the town owned that you'd have to get through?
Town, probably 5,000 square feet. So, it wouldn't be much. The town has a couple of acres, mostly wetland over in that area.
So, it's still left?
It would be, yes, to the left, because to the right is almost...
CVS, okay.
And that's part of that drainage basin.
I mean, that might be something to pursue with the town. Need to go that way to another's egress.
Yeah. Yeah, we can talk to the fire chief and see if, he typically does like two ways, you know, if he can, if he can get them, so.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything else? Do you guys want to throw anything else at us out of this or any other?
No, I mean, we'll send Mark a list of our questions and let him do the heavy lifting on that end.
Okay. Any public comment?
I was just wondering how many units of those would be affordable?
Could I ask you to...
Oh, sorry.
Step to the podium and identify yourself, please.
Susan Spielor, Ten Valley Road. I was just wondering how many units would be affordable? Would they all be affordable or just a percentage?
So, because it would be a buy-right use and not a 40B or a 40R, they'd all be market rate?
And then if it's rental, that's sort of, I mean, I guess the affordable component still could be a factor if it was a 40R or 40B. But with, I guess I'm just looking at the rental. Rental, would you rental?
Correct. Generally speaking, senior housing rentals do rent for much, when I say much, between 15 and 18% less than traditional non-restricted housing.
And that's for the reasons of you can't have childrens, less bedrooms. It's just, it's a smaller market you're renting to, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, even less wastewater flows. I mean, we can design smaller septics on age restriction.
Okay. So, if nobody else has anything else, I appreciate you guys coming in.
Thank you.
And we'll be looking forward to what you come back with.
Thanks, great, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, so, the next item on the agenda is a discussion concerning recommendations and acquisition of 61A and 61B land at the Lakeville Country Club located at 44 Clear Pond Drive.
I was asked to put this on the agenda by Michelle, because I know she's not gonna be around next week. So Michelle, would you like to speak to this?
I would, thank you. So, as we know, when the property comes out of chapter sixty-one A or sixty-one B, the town has the right of first refusal. And we could even allow another entity to step in the place of the town and, and make the purchase as well. So I have been busy reaching out to a lot of different entities and, and people and, you know, I was gonna just let you know who I've contacted. It's been quite a few. So State Senator Rodriguez, Mass Audubon, Heidi Reiki, Samuel Anderson, Nick Rossi, Bob Welber, Save Buzzards Bay, Mark Rasmussen, the CPA Coalition, Stuart and Chase, Bill Napolitano from Serped, Natural Heritage, Jason Zimmer, Aaron Best, Deborah Chamberlain, Mary Cavallaire, Joanne Pierce, who's from the Mass Department of Fish and Game. I contacted Congressman Jake Auchincloss's office and I, you know, went back and forth with Jenna Masoud and Kevin O'Neill. He was the one who suggested trying grants through land and water and fish and wildlife grants. Kurt Gartner, who's from the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Melanie Cheeseman, Endangered Species Review Assistant at Natural Heritage. The trustees, Olivia Lukak, Lukick, Mass Wildlife, DCR, Stephen Skalinski, Wildlands Trust, Scott McFadden. And he was also helpful with suggesting Park, which is active right now with a four hundred thousand max. And the LWCF, which closed in January, may have been an option with a max of seven hundred and fifty thousand. But that did close in January. And both of those programs do require a current open space and recreation plan, which unfortunately, the town does not have right now. So I reached out to a lot of places, a lot of people, and unfortunately was, you know, hit with, you know, that's a big price tag. I'll let you know if anything comes along. Unfortunately, we can't help right now. And, you know, they would tell me that they'll let me know if something comes up. I even looked into the Community One Stop, which is an application portal for all different grants. The submission of applications is now open, but determination would not happen until the fall, which is past the hundred and twenty days to exercise that right of first refusal. So I did wanna note that this location, the Lakeville Country Club, is listed on the Natural Heritage Maps as a priority habitat of rare species. And, you know, I've gotten a lot of comments and suggestions from residents. I'm not gonna go into that. I think they'll be there next week in order to speak for themselves. You know, I even looked into the CPA possibility, because you're able to borrow against future funds through bonding, which would be a thirty-year term. And, you know, calculations would be needed, but we don't even have the Community Preservation Committee appointed so far, so. That's not an option at this point, and I don't know if fifteen million or twelve point seven five would even be doable. And, you know, one of the things that we had discussed in the past was possibly reining in or doing away with the DO district, which is, you know, this, the tool which they're using to, to come with a mega warehouse for this location. And I, I was hopeful to see if maybe the planning board would, you know, discuss holding a public hearing for that, because I know we had talked about it in the past and we were gonna give residents the opportunity to join us and, and discuss that. And I think, you know, myself, I've just been busy with this CPA stuff and I think it's fallen through the cracks and I think it's definitely time to hold a public hearing for that at this point, because I think there's only a few areas in town where it really should be applied. And, you know, if, if anyone else is willing to have that discussion, I'd be, you know, happy to talk about having a public hearing.
Mark, do you have any comments towards the Development Opportunities District and make any alterations to that or otherwise?
Well, I think at this point, with town meeting coming up, the planning board's ability to place a warrant article on has passed. I think the only, and I'm not even sure whether the selectmen have the ability to create and place a new warrant article on during their meeting next week. So, because I'm not familiar with what their authority is, I'm not familiar with what the planning board's authority is, so. So, so I don't think there's an opportunity, at least from the planning board perspective, to submit an article at this point to do away with the Development Opportunities District or to modify it. I mean, if we were to modify it, as you know, we go through as we did during January, February, March, preparing, took two and a half to three months to prepare articles to rewrite some other sections of the zoning, so. If we were to look at rewriting it, that would be a project that we could do, you know, over the summer and submit for the Fall Town Meeting to reapply it, rework how, how it is applied, maybe set specific areas of the community rather than having this floating district and adjusting some of the rules within there. But, you know, that's a longer-term project, you know. Perhaps you could withdraw, you know, get it removed from the zoning if, if it could be placed on the town needed warrant for the spring and then put it back on modified for the fall, but I don't know if that even can happen, so.
Is my understanding, I'm sorry, is my understanding that even if it were to be changed, because this action is happening now, that they would be governed by what the, the zoning is today?
No. Only upon making an actual application would they freeze the zoning, so. They've stated their intention, but that doesn't, that means nothing, so.
And if the planning board said, well, we'd like to move to hold a public hearing to eliminate the Development Opportunities District, that would in turn freeze the zoning if that.
Once the hearing is.
Once the hearing was held.
Once, once the publication of the hearing is, is published.
Can we do that tomorrow?
Well, not really, because you don't have an article. And I don't know whether the planning board can submit, I don't think you can submit articles for right now.
Regardless of, of Spring Town Meeting?
We're not looking at Spring Town Meeting, because I think her point is freeze the zoning and then hold a public hearing in five months.
I'd have to look at the statute regard, regarding that, because there are, I believe, some limitations on how how long prior to town meeting you can do that.
Six months.
So.
So if you hold it, you have six months, because we, we went through this with marijuana overlay.
Okay.
Where we didn't end up having a Fall Town Meeting, so we had to hold another public hearing five months after the first one in order to keep the zoning froze until the following Spring Town Meeting.
Okay. So, so it is.
That said.
That said, if, if it is, in fact, six months, you could hold a hearing now and then if, depending when town meeting comes up, you could hold it. If you needed to hold another one to extend it, you could do that as well. In the meantime, we could be writing, working on a modified version if there was the interest in doing so over the summer. So, and then you could submit that as a separate article from, and we'd call it something different. I mean, you know, that is a possibility.
Okay, so can we schedule a public hearing for?
I think we'd need a motion to do that and a vote.
Okay.
And then I guess that's, that's what would trigger that.
But so it would have to be for, it would have to be advertised for fourteen days?
Yeah, we'd have to write a, write a notice, we'd have to write an article.
So we could we could have it in its own meeting or we would have to be a planning board scheduled meeting?
Which? What are you, what are you looking at? I mean, I can handwrite you an article right now, but, because it doesn't have to say very much. It just has to be our normal introduction to see if the town will vote to, you know, and then we would say, reference the section to remove certain sections. So it's, it's possible to write it now. Then, you know, if you wanted to do this, I mean, you know, you could then vote to, to do so and then we could write a hearing notice and submit that to the newspaper to be advertised for a hearing later this month or, or May, so.
So let me ask you, devil's advocate. If the planning board did that and we froze the zoning and no application was put in prior to the advertisement, what is the risk to the town of Lakeville? Because the property in question that this is coming up because of is zoned business anyway. And I, I, I look at it, my concerns are the, the access points to its frontage.
Well, that's the thing. It's like, you know, you, you just don't know what the future use could be. I mean, it could be broken up into multiple parcels for multiple forty Bs over the next, you know, five or ten years. I mean, it could be, it could be, if it's zoned business, it could be broken up into an office park or some other use that will still generate an impact to the neighborhood. It may be a different impact. It might be high, high traffic and, and, and you know, at certain times of day, which this wouldn't generate, may have a different access points, which might impact the neighborhoods more than this facility. I mean, again, we don't really know, you can't predict how, how it would be developed in the future for some, some other kind of use, so.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to hold a public hearing in regards to doing away with the Development Opportunities District.
I would second that.
I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor? Jack?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain from the vote. I'm a little bit, I'm concerned about the ramifications, but the motion carries with a majority. So I guess at this point, we'd ask you, Mark, to draft a brief article of the elimination of the Development Opportunities District. And post a public hearing.
Okay.
So we had some folks come in tonight to discuss the chapter stuff on the Lakeville Country Club. Would anybody from the public like to speak to that?
I, I wanna also preface that, you know, people do watch these meetings and there's a good chance that there'll be an application that will come in very quickly for this. So the action that the board just took does not guarantee that, you know, the intent would happen, the intent of that action would, would carry through. It may just speed up the process. So that said.
I was just wondering what it would do to the right of first refusal if the DO is removed? I mean, does that have any ramifications on right of first refusal, though?
Zoning doesn't have any effect on that, in my opinion.
I think so.
So then the town could still purchase it?
No, I mean, what's really.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really before the board is, was the, you know, the right of first refusal and that's still an active app, you know, document and process that needs to be followed through, so. So regardless of whether there's a an article proposed by the board to get rid of the DoD or not, you still need to go through this process, because there's an active application, you know, for, for, I mean, an active.
So the town could potentially still purchase it if they wanted to?
It could happen.
Okay.
It, it, well, we don't know. I mean, so at this point, I wanted it on the agenda tonight, because again, Michelle wasn't gonna be here next week to speak to it. And the meeting that's next week wasn't scheduled when I put it on the agenda, so. I, I just wanted to make sure people that wanna speak to it could speak to it. That said, we don't know how the action that the board just took will play out. We don't know if it'll affect that. To Mark's point, yes, it's still a right of first refusal action that the town cannot, cannot take or may or may not take, I should say. And that's really gonna come down to the board of selectmen, because the planning board has no budget. Well, I shouldn't say they have no budget. Now we have a budget, because we finally have some help. But we don't have fifteen million dollars and we don't have the ability to force that hand, so to speak.
I love the paperwork that documents that Kathy had sent out to us, said that the town was gonna waive its right of first refusal. Or did I, am I misreading it or?
No, they included that in case the town did waive their rights, as I read it, that they provided that should the town waive their rights for refusal.
So. As far as before tonight and after tonight, nothing has changed, other than we made a motion to make a change in the zoning, but that doesn't affect, and again, like I said, there may be an application in the town hall tomorrow.
I'm sure there will be. So now when will this hearing be posted? Will that be tomorrow?
No, it won't be here tomorrow.
Oh.
So it won't be till next week. So I mean, it has to get in the newspapers, but it has to get advertised, so it'll probably be end of next week.
So that said.
I'm all set.
Nothing else?
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to say anything?
Hi, I'm Paul McAllister. I live right down the street from Lakeville Country Club, so obviously I have some concern. We just bought our house there. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood on a dead-end street. I was kinda hoping to keep it that way. I don't suppose we know any plans that they would have if it became a distribution center as far as ingress, egress, access to roads or any of that?
I haven't seen a plan yet or conceptual. I have some ideas, but I wouldn't wanna publicly speculate what's gonna happen until we get a, a plan in writing if it goes that direction.
Okay.
Would you agree with that assessment, Mark?
Well, they, they have met with the applicants and they have indicated that they're acquiring another property to get direct access out onto Bedford Street so that they wouldn't go out through the golf course entrance as a primary access point. That's correct.
Yeah, and I'm aware of that.
So, you know, it's, but again, it's, it's a concept plan. And that's all, all it was for discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would really say keep, keep an eye on the planning board agenda in the coming weeks and months and if you see anything. We usually meet here. If we have a high volume of folks that seem to start to attend, we may have to change the venue. Because I would like everybody to be present if they wanna be. But like I said.
Okay, also.
Keep your eye on it, the town website.
I moved there because that's a nice lake right across the street from my house. Do you know access to the water, lakefront and so forth? Is that public or would that be by the owner of the?
Reservoir on Stetson?
Reservoir on, well, it's on Reservoir Drive is where I live, Reservoir Ave. There's the, kind of the finger lakes that go right through what's currently the golf course.
Yeah, so I think from, coming from that side, access would be through the golf course unless, I don't know who owns that outer edge of that, if you can access through there. My knowledge of my only, the, the only public access would be off Stetson Street. There's a little spot where you could park there or maybe put a car top boat in. Public access would be off Stetson Street, there's a little spot where you could park there or maybe put a car, top boat in, a canoe or kayak. But even at that, I'm, I'm, I don't want to. Say that that's legal, I don't know that, uh, my impression of what I've heard in the past is. Uh, one of their butters wanted to put a boat on there, but the owner of the golf course didn't want that because that was. Part of the golf course, not part of. The public, but I know kids that have fished off the shore there.
Sure.
On Stetson Street, but that's the only.
Okay, just curious.
Close, and again, I'm not advocating, I, for the record, I didn't tell everybody to go there fishing.
No. I usually just walk across the street, so it's real easy, but, um.
Yeah.
Alright, very good, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else from the planning board want to speak to this? I don't want to take a vote on any kind of a recommendation, uh, tonight, uh, Michelle, you, would you draft your thoughts and? Send something to either me or Kathy just so we can read them to the record on next Wednesday's meeting?
Yes.
Uh. So, if everybody's good with that, like I say, there'll be another hearing, uh, to discuss that with multiple boards and we'll see. Moving on. Uh, we have zoning board of appeals petition for Seven Carey Street, looks like the folks wanted to add some decks on to their property. Uh, there would maybe approach on some setbacks, uh, I would say our standard action on a residential thing like this is that the planning board. Move to make no recommendation or. No action from the planning board to the zoning board of appeals on this article.
One second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor, Jack?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
Myself, motion carries unanimously. Uh. Just for the record, oh, we have a minutes of meeting for February twenty-fourth. Uh, did anybody get a chance to review these?
Yes.
And I was actually not present. For that, that meeting.
Yeah, and I would have to abstain. So I don't, not sure we can vote on.
We absolutely can, we have a forum.
Even though two of us have to abstain?
Yep, we have a forum, we have four people here tonight and. So the majority of the remaining people will vote and either one person will vote against and one for, or both will vote for. And it will pass with a majority of the remaining members, that's actually how Robert's rules works, it's not, we don't need three voting members, we just need three present to make a forum.
Okay.
Uh. Yeah. So I did glance through them, Jack, you, you were good with them?
Yes, I did.
So I move to approve the minutes of the planning board for our February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Uh, that's my motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor, Jack?
Aye.
Myself votes aye and.
Abstain.
Abstain.
So I have two abstentions and two ayes and so motion carries. Minutes are approved. Discussion on recodification project, which I think that's, uh, is maybe a question for Mark that I don't know if you've gotten stuff ready, I think. I communicated with Kathy to make sure you weren't blindsided with that, so if you're not ready.
Uh, well, so I've read through the comments about recodification, it's really a, a project that, um. Willing, the town clerk is kind of headlining. That's correct, because it's really a, a renumbering and reorganization of the entire bylaw, all the bylaws, not just zoning or. Anything else, there were some recommendations made by the company that. Put together kind of a draft, I think. Um, I skimmed through, you know, and there were comments on not just zoning, but all the things and I, I looked through them, um. Couple months ago when we were talking about what we were going to work on for. And there wasn't anything that I saw that absolutely needed to be done immediately, which is why we didn't go to that list and we went to. Some of the other things that we've been working on, so, um, you know, I think maybe over the summer we can. Pull out, pull, send that list around to everybody and you'll see that they're not really. Significant major changes, they're more some technical changes. Because they weren't hired to, you know, give planning advice, they were hired for just a reorganization of a bylaw, so.
So I guess my question is, can we? Move forward with the recodification and make whatever changes necessary afterwards, I think the major one would, I think. They call Nate's position all different terms, whether it's building commissioner, zoning commissioner, I think. That, keeping that consistent would probably be helpful, but I don't know if it's necessary to really do in order to adopt the recodification.
Exactly, I think they would kind of incorporate all those changes into one, because you, you will probably, or they will probably submit a single article to re-adopt. You know, to delete all the existing bylaws and re-adopt the codification. And when they re-adopt it, they'll have the corrections made. I was looking at their recommendations, is there anything that's going to get the community in trouble? You know, before they get to that. Uh, finishing this project that we ought to change right away and there was.
There's nothing.
Really nothing in there. It was fixing inconsistencies is what they, they, uh, a lot of the things that they pointed out, so.
Yeah. Because I think it would be great to get it done, so many towns have, you know, that, that, uh, software. So it's so much easier to search and find things within the bylaw once, once it's, um, put into play, so.
So. As far as an update, it's still in the works?
Uh, as far as I know, I haven't, um. I mean, I think.
You haven't been asked.
I haven't been asked to work on anything or I'm not aware of any additional meetings, I mean, Michelle was, you were on the committee, right?
Yeah, and I mean, I think that was last September that we got together and, and then I didn't hear anything about it.
I mean, I heard that. They were going to be trying to pick it up again after town meeting, but I think, you know, what happens is when you have a town meeting, you have budgets, you have everything else going on. Uh, the, an election that takes up a lot of time from the clerk's office, so I think, um, after town meeting. I think they'll probably call for another meeting or two to try and move that forward.
Okay.
Very good. Uh, so moving along. Where Barbara was our Serphead representative, we need to replace that with a new Serphead representative. Would anybody want to be the?
I can't right now, when, after my exchange student goes, uh, home in June, I would be more than willing to, but while I still have the exchange student, I just, I couldn't.
Okay, um. So, I would move to make Nora the planning board representative of Serphead in June. And in the meantime, I will attend the meetings as our interim Serphead member.
Second.
Do I have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Nora.
Mark, if you're going to, uh, you go to multiple meetings, if you need to, I'll do it till Nora takes over.
No, I don't mind, I'd actually like to sit down on a few of them, because it's, we're only talking like two months, right?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Unless you want to do it. We actually, I think we did talk about you doing the Serphead thing to Mark.
Okay, um.
I think he's got his hands full.
I mean, I have, I have been the town's representative in other places to, um, you know, the other regional planning agencies, so. At times or represented to certain specific committees or things, so, um.
Sounds like a no to me right now.
Yeah.
We don't want him to run away.
Maybe, I mean, I'll go the next two months if they have a meeting, um, but I think. At least initially, if Nora would like to attend, we can have her attend if, and if we really run into issues.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, like, like Barbara has been that representative for a number of years now, I know basically she, she'll attend the meetings, I think they were on Wednesdays usually.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how many times a month they met, if it was just once a month or?
I think it was just once.
Uh.
Mark, if you can't make my note.
And. She just would come back with some updates occasionally, just let us know what was going on.
Yeah.
Uh. I mean, it, for you, I'm sure it'd be like watching paint dry. Well, you know, where you're a planner.
It depends, what, what issues are going, are before the, you know, the, the group at the time, so, um, so.
Well, if you ever feel that it would be a benefit for you to go, please speak up and.
Let me, yeah, let me just get a little more settled into.
Yeah, yep.
Um, the tasks here in Lakeville before I start representing the community in other. Other capacities, so, um. So we can have you and Nora at least initially pick that up and, and, um, and then I can step in.
Okay. Uh, item ten on the agenda is, just has the line, review correspondence, is there anything that you have from that, Mark, or is that just something that?
Most of the, the correspondence is what we get from other communities, there's one interesting one, there's a marijuana cultivation and manufacturing facilities. I don't know where, Mile Standish Boulevard in Taunton, is that anywhere close to?
No, it's the other side of Taunton.
Oh, the other side, okay.
It's a good place for it.
Um. And Rainham's proposing a hearing to adopt a new master plan. And most of the other things are setbacks and special, other types of special permits, nothing of any. Significance that would impact Lakeville. So. Uh, those were the big ones, I, I always take a quick read through to see if there's anything of regional impact, so.
Nothing major then?
That's it, those were, those were the big ones.
Okay, the next two items, I'm going to lump them, we have old business and new business, do you have anything you want to talk about, Mark?
Uh, not at this time.
Um, I had one I just wanted to toss by you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was actually talking to an engineer. Who. Talked about business development in Lakeville and when I, I'm talking business development, I'm talking smaller stuff, stuff on, you know. I, I'm just thinking hypothetically, three or four acre lots or less, not major stuff, but, um. He had said one of the biggest constraints was setbacks, where we have the. Between the, the lot coverage.
Mm-hmm.
Density stuff and setbacks, those were two challenges for, for them that. Maybe projects wouldn't come through because they just couldn't meet the setbacks. With the desired square footage that they needed or whatever, or it, it shifts so you couldn't put the building strong to one side to get the parking around and.
Yeah.
Behind it, or whatever, um, is that something that, I, I guess. Without memorizing it at all, do you think that would be something that we could either give relief or change those if that helped with business development in town?
Well, I think, I think, well, the answer is yes, um, I mean, you know, we can, I can write anything. You know, if you set a direction, I can write a bylaw and modify it to, to work, I mean, we had discussed earlier when we were working on adopting site plan review. That once we had a better, um, ability to modify site plans, look at building designs and everything under site plan review. Then we can reduce the, that fifty percent. You know, as of, you know, um. Lot coverage requirement, we can reduce that, so, and we can, because we have, um, the architectural standards within site plan now, we can. Modify that, those sections with density bonuses and everything else and we can also look, and look at incorporating, um. And modifying the setback requirements, because now you can look at intent, if you need to require screening and buffering, you can. You can have it, you know, require something more specific under the site plan. Rules and regs as opposed to just saying, oh, well, let's just make it really big and wide and then, you know, and then. Uh, but, uh, you don't have anything that requires like a lot of screening, you just have these big setbacks, so I think, um.
Yeah, we're forty, forty, forty on business.
Yeah.
And.
In a fifty percent lot coverage, you, you end up with a much.
If you had a two acre or less of a, a lot.
Mm-hmm.
But you could shift the building over twenty feet to the left lot line and you could make it work to go around the right side, depending on the, the width of the lot. That could be a benefit to making a business happen and I'm just, so I'm hypothetically going through this saying. What if you were, and again, I don't want it to be that. A Home Depot comes to town and it goes ten feet from the lot line because we. Allowed it, I, I, I want it to be some sort of a relief for something that's say, under. Uh, eighty thousand square foot lot.
Yeah.
And you could allow relief towards one lot line with the building.
Well, the other thing is, is, uh.
And maybe that's when it's against another business property?
Good, well, the, um, if you look at our zoning, we have several large industrial districts, so in the industrial districts, you may want to write something different than. You, you have several much smaller or along some roadways, business districts, so you may want to. Have different standards for each of them because, um, in our current business districts, you're not going to get a Home Depot, they're not big enough, you're going to get this. Smaller, you know, Walden, C V Ss, the, the private developer building a building to lease out like we had earlier discussion. Um, so those buildings clearly could have smaller setbacks, less lot coverage, I mean, you only have a limited amount of space. Uh, you could, um, require if it abuts residential, you do have something in there, but. We can make it a little more specific to that zoning district because a lot of the backs of, of this commercial abuts residential. So, uh, we can, uh, make sure that we protect the residential abutters to those commercial properties, um. And then the industrial district, you have a very limited amount of, you know, industrial land that can be developed and.
It's pretty much all developed now.
Yeah, but, you know, a lot of it could be developed, redeveloped more intensely, let's say.
I know there's a piece up by the school that's, it was almost developed industri, uh, zoned industrial to protect it, but it should be changed, but. Uh, everything else that's industrial is pretty much built.
Right.
But you're saying you could allow it to be more dense?
You could allow it to be more dense with a higher lot coverage, um, and, you know, less setbacks, but require. Um, that within the buffer zone, it must be, you know, landscaped, let's say, so you have. You don't get parking lots within the buffer zone, but you have a smaller buffer zone, so, um, you can require those to be landscaped or screened, uh, from the budding properties and so on and so forth, so. You, you can get a higher, better quality site design while still allowing. Uh, higher density on, on whether it's a business property or an industrial property.
So, something maybe we could look at.
Yep.
In the, the future months to say what would make it eas, and, and again, I'm looking at it just strictly from a small business thing, not as much from the industrial, but if there are things that. We could do to benefit industrial, that's fine. But I. I don't think that's as, as important as the, the small business on Main Street type of things where we do have a lot of. Either small lots or stuff that could be a business that maybe it's a home right now, it's zoned business and you're really, really limited to what you can do because of those forty, forty, forty setbacks.
Yep.
So, alright, I just wanted to bring that up and maybe in the future we'll hit that. Uh. Our next meeting, well, actually, our next regularly scheduled meeting is going to be April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, we will have that other meeting Wednesday, April twentieth at six-thirty at. The Lakeville Library, uh. If there is no other business to come before the planning board, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.